Good evening. Will the members and our guests take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight’s meeting, a reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating and just as for all. Welcome to the October meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Burr, RTM moderator. All right, let’s take up the minutes for our September meeting. Doug Wells, Chair of Legislative Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, there are some minor changes to the minutes of the meeting on page fifteen of the September sixteenth meeting. The last paragraph begins Doug Wells, Chairman of Legislative Rules Committee, made amendments from page fourteen as follows. In that first line where it says “in section six A, Galipian Place after,” it says “reading,” where it should be “procedure with a capital P.” And then in the third line it says “in section C,” it actually should be “section D.” And then it should read “the call of,” it’s proper, but then the minutes failed to delete the words “for.” Insert the “and” and delete the word “for.”
All right. Is there any objection to those amendments? Hearing none, those amendments are adopted upon unanimous consent. Are there any other proposed changes to the minutes of our September meeting? Hearing none, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Tom Broadhurst, Chair of District Five.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, guests. I rise to honor a longstanding member of this body and former Chair of District Five, Franklin Blumer. The phrase “a life well lived” could have been created for this astonishingly accomplished man. Father, lawyer, runner, sailor, cyclist, skier, vocalist, civic leader, the list of descriptives could last longer than our budget meeting. Franklin cared about his family, his town, and the world. He saw things close up from the seat of his bike, his kayak, his sailboat, as well as from countless meetings where his concern for the direction of the town was evident. Franklin had the amazing ability to focus on the smallest details while never losing sight of the big picture. Born in New York, Franklin grew up in Riverside where he lived most of his life. That is, when he wasn’t attending Amherst College, Columbia Law School, serving in the U.S. Navy, or living in Jeddah, Saudi Arabia, or London. Or when he was sailing across the Atlantic, kayaking the Arctic, or hiking the Appalachian Trail. He filled his life with adventure and service, squeezing every drop of experience from his wide disparate world. Members of District Five, this body, and residents of the town of Greenwich have benefited from Franklin’s dedication, wisdom, and vision. He served over fourteen terms in this body and was Chair of both the Public Works and Land Use Committees. In the latter case, reimagining the work and the role of that most important committee, changing the way we view both the relentless pressures on the character of our town and how to protect those elements we value so highly. His contributions to the town and the body are leached, not least of which were his work on regional planning, transportation concerns, and the plan of conservation and development, all issues we continue to debate today. We are grateful to have had his friendship, leadership, and experience. We are grateful to his family for sharing them with us. We ask that these words are entered into the minutes and a fair copy is made and distributed to his family, including his brother Kent and his beloved daughters Sarah, Gail, Leslie, Kate, and Alice. Thank you.
Will the members please rise for a moment of silence in memory of Franklin Blumer. Thank you. Liz Perry, a member of District Seven and a member of our Technology Advisory Group, has asked for a moment to explain the new town website.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Perry. I’m a member of District Seven and, as the moderator mentioned, also a member of the Technology Advisory Group, a special group formed by the moderator to see if we could improve the efficiency of the RTM through technology. We’ve been working on many things. You’ve heard, perhaps in your district, some reports. I just wanted to come and mention a small feature of the new website, and I’ll send this out as an email as well, but I thought perhaps an in-person announcement was best. One very popular feature of the old website that has disappeared to our chagrin is the easy access to email and phone numbers for the members. So I just wanted to show you with a couple of slides how you, as members of the RTM, can find that email. It’s now behind a single password that we all share. Password is easy to remember. It’s GreenwichRTM. That’s the password. It’s not case-sensitive, meaning it doesn’t matter which letters are capitalized. There’s no punctuation, there are no spaces, it’s just GreenwichRTM. So, to access that functionality, if you just look up here, you can go to the website however you normally get there. Typical path would be you go to the Greenwich Town Page, Home, Government, Representative Town Meeting, and then you want to go to the page that lists the entire membership. From there, you’ll see a slide, I know this is a little tricky with the light, again, I’ll send it out, but you’ll see that where it says “RTM Members,” I put an arrow there, there’s an “Expand” button. You may have noticed that. It’s a blank little expand box. I wish that box said “Enter your password here,” but it says “Expand,” and you type in GreenwichRTM. Again, not case-sensitive, no spaces, and when you hit Expand, you will then have visible -- I apologize to these people whose names and emails I’m now broadcasting, but the first, the As of the RTM, the phone numbers and the emails. I will say, if you do this from your mobile phone, if you touch that phone number, your phone will ask, “Are you dialing this number?” And you can dial directly from there, so you don’t have to write it down and find it another way. So again, I’ll send this out and hope that this at least allows us to contact one another more easily using this password. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the call for tonight’s meeting. I did notify the district and committee chairs that I would recommend an organization based upon the reports received. There is one change from what I had recommended because there is now a need to act on a substitute resolution for one of the appointments. So rather than put that on our consent calendar, that will go on the separate, it will be considered separately. So, what I will do in a moment is recommend that we combine the following items on our consent calendar. Items one, two, ten through thirteen, and sixteen, which would leave us to consider separately items three through nine, fourteen, and fifteen. So at this time, pursuant to our rules, I will designate the following items for our consent calendar. And if they remain on the consent calendar, all you will hear tonight on them is what I’m about to say, as we do not take committee reports or have discussion on consent calendar items. First item is item number one, that’s the appointment of Sardar Umar to be a regular member of the condemnation commission for a term expiring March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Item two is the appointment of Andrew Bronin to be a regular member of the Board of Health for a term expiring July one, two thousand nineteen, oh, I’m sorry, for a term expiring June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. The next item for the consent calendar is item number ten. That is the appointment of Margarita Albin to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term beginning November one, two thousand nineteen, and expiring October thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Item eleven is the appointment of Nicholas Macri to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term beginning November one, two thousand nineteen, and expiring October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Item twelve is the appointment of Jefferson Parker Jr. to be an alternate member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term beginning upon appointment and expiring March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Item thirteen is the appointment of Suzanne Brown to be a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. And the final item for our consent calendar is item sixteen, which is the appointment of Philip Dotson to be a regular member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Is there any objection to the designation of those items for our consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items one, two, ten through thirteen, and sixteen, and proceed to pull your delegation. While we are voting on those, we will take up the first of the separate items. We will consider these in numerical order, so that number three will now come before us. May we have the resolution on number three? Oh, wait a minute. All right. So this was postponed. This was not postponed? Yes, it was. Okay. So it was postponed. So item three is now before us. This is a resolution from the Special Committee on RTM Governance, and it has to do with disclaimers to be made when RTM members speak publicly. May we have the reports of the committees that considered item number three? Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
So this matter came back to Legislative Rules Committee on Monday, and we have voted on this from the September, this call. We first noted that this disclaimer provision says “should,” and since it says “should,” we thought that it would be appropriate that it be in the appendix rather than the rules. And we made some language changes to this provision and then took a vote on it as amended. There were several members of our committee that were concerned about the fact that this disclaimer seems to direct RTM members’ conduct when they’re outside of the meeting. They’re out in the public, they’re speaking in a public forum other than the RTM, and many were concerned that that’s not the purview of the Governance Committee to tell RTM members how they should speak when they’re not at an RTM meeting or a committee meeting or a district meeting. That was our first concern. We were also at a loss to know of any other elected official of the town of Greenwich or anyplace else of that matter that has to preface their statements with a disclaimer such as this. And there were several of our members who were concerned about the free speech, First Amendment rights, this free speech that is implicated by seeming to direct people in what manner they should speak and what they say. So for all those reasons, our vote on the item as amended was two in favor, ten opposed, with districts eight and eleven voting in favor of the item. And at the appropriate time, I would make the changes to this, to move it to the appendix and make some other changes. In the event that this does pass, we think there’s more appropriate language that should be included in this.
Thank you. Rob Corelli Minetti, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Finance Committee discussed this matter extensively in September. We decided that we did not wish to revisit the item or our vote. It was eight in favor, four opposed. It’s September, it’s the same vote. The no votes believed that the resolution was too broad, it was already inherent as an RTM member, and some members would simply forget leaving other people with an advantage who was making public statements one side or the other. And it also was noted that the language is prudatory, and so no real violation can occur.
All right, before we take the next report, I would like to mention that hopefully you saw as you walked in, there were signup sheets for speakers on the separate items. So if you desire to address the body of any of those, you are advised to put your name on that list. Arlene Lamazza, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
At our last meeting in September, we voted twelve zero zero, and voting again this time, we saw no reason to change that, so it’s still twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Alan Small, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Transportation Committee, in effect, this was to honor us, and voted eight zero zero, in favor of the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Roberts.
We discussed this at our September meeting, did not feel it needed to be discussed again. Our vote was eleven zero zero, this is a three absent.
Thank you. Andy Chapin with the Parks and Recreation Report.
Our vote was the same, although we had a different district. We did discuss it because we had different districts missing each time. In general, the vote was nine to zero. Those opposed were saying it needs more clarification. Those in favor thought, no, it’s common sense.
Richard Newman with the Town Services Report.
Town Services took this up in September, and again, this month, it was zero, eleven zero in September. This month, we agree, zero, nine zero, it was a different group, districts four, six, and ten absent. Members of the committee thought the language was very broad, the need for such a rule had not been demonstrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Blank, Chair of our Education Committee.
Hi, we did not take this item up again in October. In September, we voted to refer the item to ELLNR to revise the language to address two issues. First, that the term “publicly” was vague and overbroad and could be construed to even apply to comments made by RTM members during RTM meetings. And second, that the disclaimer was only necessary if a person first identified themselves as a member of the RTM. So our vote on that motion to refer passed eleven zero zero, District Two absent, and it sounds like ELLNR has now addressed some of those issues.
Thank you. Peter Bird, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. When you still take this item up in September, our vote at that time was twelve zero zero. We agreed with the spirit of the item, and we did not take it up again this month.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget and Overdue Committee.
Good evening. The BOC took this up in September. The vote was one eight two. There were several problems with the restriction and legality of enforcement. An idea was proposed for all town elected officials, including first elected, the E.T. Board of Ed, to follow the same rule of disclaimer. The town attorney is apparently researching this matter, and we upheld this vote ten zero zero in October. Thank you.
Thank you. John Addy with the Appointment and Reporting Report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Appointment Committee did not take this item up again. In September, we voted seven five zero. The discussion was pretty much what you’ve heard, and more detail will be provided by the members who will be speaking to decide.
All right. So that, Mr. Wells with the motion to be offered on behalf of Legislative and Rules
The, two of the first three paragraphs are amended as follows, we’ll read. Resolve that the statement below be added to the appendix to the rules of the Representative Town Meeting in a section to be determined by the Legislative and Rules Committee, to read as follows. If members of the RTM identify themselves as such, they should preface their remarks with a disclaimer substantially similar to the statement below when they are speaking on their own behalf or presenting their own ideas publicly. Vote in favor of this motion to amend was twelve zero zero.
All right, that is a motion offered on behalf of one of our committees and does not require a second, so it is currently before us. Any discussion on that proposed amendment? Is there any, we can adopt motions upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to that motion to amend? Hearing none, motion to amend is adopted. All right, so item three, as amended now, places that language that you just heard in the appendix, making it advisory now mandatory. Discussion on item three is amended. Mr. Lopez? Ed Lopez, District Three.
Good evening, fellow members of the RTM. I’m here to basically make my case against this resolution. I feel that the resolution is well-intended, but it is my impression of the solution to the problem it seeks to address is too broad in scope, which has already been mentioned. It seeks to address something that should be tackled in a more surgical manner, in my opinion. As it stands, the proposal cultivates confusion and ambiguity. Although none of us can speak for the RTM on our own, we all have a responsibility to be transparent to our neighbors that elect us, to let them know where we stand on the issues, whether by writing newspaper editorial letters and emails, and also by communicating on social media. These are paramount tools in our democracy. This item is intended to prevent views from being misconstrued as those of the RTM, but it comes dangerously close, in my view, to bridling our volition to speak of as elected representatives in our neighborhoods. It comes terribly close to a space that overlaps First Amendment sensitivities, and I feel we can do a lot better. In fact, what Lucia said regarding the attorney’s office and what they’re looking into, trying to understand how broad the scope of this should be, we should at least give that some time to resolve itself. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on item number three. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number three, and proceed to pull your delegation? Yeah, as amended. You are, if you want to make this part of the appendix as described by Mr. Wells, you vote yes. If you want nothing to do with this, you vote no. Item number four now comes before us. This also was postponed from our September meeting, so it is now currently before us. This is an amendment to the various descriptions of our standing committees found in Appendix B of the RTM rules. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Ms. Vulgaris, Chair of our Governance Committee.
So before I start with this, I would like to thank, this is our very last hurrah for the twenty-seven meetings, fifteen people that worked on governance. You will find, I assure you, fifteen people that could not be more elated that we are approaching the finish line. I would especially like to thank Andy Chapin and Bill Collins, who are two members on the committee that will not be returning to the RTM. I hope it’s because we didn’t break you with this committee. So, good evening. This resolution is being offered on behalf of the Governance Committee. It’s in response to feedback that the committee received concerning the current structure, organization, and workload of the appointments committee, as well as in response to feedback that the RTM needed to do a better job of reducing redundancy. The Governance Committee collected many pieces of feedback covering a wide variety of issues and topics. Several pieces of feedback we received specific to the appointments committee were as follows. Swift the nominating and appointing functions to balance the workload. Clarify the appointments committee responsibilities. Appointments has too big of a workload. And give interviewing and approving candidates responsibilities to relevant committees rather than appointments. Additionally, the committee received feedback that the RTM needed to identify ways to reduce redundancy and make the overall RTM process more efficient. As part of the review process for many issues, not just this issue, the Governance Committee reviewed meeting minutes and meeting videos from the current term. Pertained to this issue, we learned the following. That when a standing committee and the appointments committee interviewed the same candidate, the appointments committee did not cover material that was not already presented by the standing committee. That is primary oversight for the board or commission. While the appointments committee is responsible for evaluating candidates for the one hundred and twenty-four positions across boards and commissions, that averages roughly, over their three-year terms, that averages roughly about forty candidates per year. So I’ll give you the data for two thousand eighteen. In two thousand eighteen, the RTM considered forty-five nominations. Twenty-nine nominations, sixty-four percent, were placed directly on the consent calendar, which means no reports were heard or given by any committee. And sixteen nominations required reports by their firm committees. And fifteen of sixteen of those reports, or ninety-four percent, the appointments committee stated that had nothing to add to the previous report, and in almost all the cases, they offered a unanimous vote supporting the candidate. It appears that the broader body is not benefiting from the extra time the appointments committee and the nominees are investing in the interview process, and in addition to the time required to conduct the interview. There have also been scheduling logistics that have led to delays in bringing the nomination to the floor by a vote of the full RTM. The appointments committee does, however, have an important role to play with the boards and commissions and RTM special committees that they are the nominating authority for. They are the experts in those areas and are best qualified to understand the unique needs of those entities and identify the most qualified candidates to serve on them. The Governance Committee worked to identify a revised nomination process that was more effective in harnessing the energy and expertise of the appointments committee while at the same time reducing redundancy, making better use of the member and candidate’s time, and reducing the frequency that a nomination may need to be postponed. Our recommendation is therefore, for the Governance, the Governance Committee is proposing that the appointments committee continue to assume full responsibility for the thirty nominations that they oversee directly, Claims Committee, Condomination Commission, Flood and Erosion Control Board, Harbor Management, RTM Ex officio only, and Labor Contracts, and forego being required to interview nominees proposed by the Board of Selectment. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to the next report, I do have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items one, two, ten through thirteen, and sixteen. Those in favor, one eighty-three; opposed, zero, abstaining, one. The consent calendar items have carried. Doug Wells with our Legislative and Rules Report on item four.
The Legislative Rules Committee, first of all, on our September meeting, found a couple of typographical errors that we will deal with at the end of the reports. Most notably, there was a reference to agency not, weapons agency not included in the Land Use Committee’s operational responsibilities. And we also noted that at our last meeting in September, we learned the Town Services Committee doesn’t want to have anything to do with evaluating the candidates for the Labor Contracts Committee, so we deleted that provision as well out of the operational responsibility of the Town Services Committee. On the merits of this item, our vote was three in favor, nine opposed, with districts two, four, and nine voting in favor of this item.
Thank you. Kimberly Blank, the Education Committee Report.
When we voted on this at our September meeting, our vote was ten one zero, with District Two absent, District Twelve voting against it. After our September meetings, at our district meetings, members of the committee became aware of the appointments committee’s concerns about this item. So we decided to take this item up again at our October meeting. We voted eleven zero zero to refer this item to the ELLNR Committee to consider some of the various proposals that have been circulated. One would be to strike the first part of the proposal, which dealt with removing the appointments committee’s responsibility for several of the boards. Another, which had broad support, would be to have the appointments committee meet with nominees for new appointments to abort, but not to meet with them for renominations. Some on the committee felt that the Education Committee should consider nominees for the Labor Contracts Committee, since it covers the largest unions in town. One member felt that the Finance Committee should not vote on LCC nominees. There was general support for the idea of revising the nominating process in some way to streamline it, but our committee did not vote on a specific proposal, and is hoping that ELLNR can make some progress with recapturing this provision, and I will offer the motion to refer at an appropriate time.
Thank you. Our next committee report, Arlene Lamazza with the Public Works Committee Report.
We should take this up previously at our September meeting, and I will give all the committees and commissions that are now being recommended that, not the appointments committee, take up exclusively. And although we voted eleven zero zero at our last meeting, this time we discussed it further. And our vote now is five in favor, five against. And our vote now is five in favor, five against. Districts six, seven, eight, 10, and 11 voted no. Districts two and nine were absent. Arrived for the no votes was because the explanations that were originally provided did not specify why it was being recommended. Therefore, as members, we assumed that this change originated at the request of the nominating committee itself, in order to unburden them of having to introduce such a large number of candidates. That assumption proved false. Therefore, we did not, we voted five-five.
Thank you. Richard Newman with Town Services, report.
We discussed item four again. After voting last month, we defer it to December. Now, with only minor changes, we feel the new rule still diminishes the Appointments Committee. The Town Service still does not feel that we need to interview labor candidates committees. Candidates, sorry. Our vote was one-four-eight against, with District four, Sigma, ten absent. The yes vote believes that the appointment function should be distributed to committees that are closer to the needs of boards and commissions they oversee. Thank you.
John Eddie with the Appointments Committee, report.
Thank you. As you can imagine, the Appointments Committee has quite a bit to say on this item. We discussed this on September 10th, but we did not take up this item again at our recent meeting, except how to anticipate and address motions that we understood to be coming up. Josh Graham is present at this meeting as a representative of the Governance Committee. Our understanding was that the Governance Committee was looking to bring efficiency and effectiveness to the RTM and to streamline the nominating experience, in the context in which we were looking at these and understanding. Lucy Krabs, District five, is present to address the Appointments Committee. She expressed her view that the broad perspective on town matters that members gain from serving in such a committee as Appointments is a benefit to the RTM, and there's not another place on the RTM where this can be obtained to the same degree. Other discussion on this item was pre-brought, as I mentioned, so I'm tempted to summarize by organizing all of the remarks into three sections. One, the info provided with the resolution was need to be clarified and corrected. Number two, the critical role that the Appointments Committee plays in providing responsible governance. And three, recent perceptions expressed about the Appointments Committee which we are addressing. So with respect to the information that needs to be corrected, the explanations in September stated that the Appointments Committee interviews over 130 people a year. I believe this was corrected in Ms. Vulgaris's statements a few minutes ago. In fact, 131 is the number of appointments to positions where she, the committee, is assigned responsibility, but these positions do not turn over annually and have terms two, three, or four, or five years, as you should be aware. So the actual workload expressed in that original document is about one, the actual workload of the committee is about one-third of that that is found in the explanations that were provided. Number two, suggestions that the Appointments Committee members have burnt out and have requested this resolution. I can go into all the details, but I think everybody understands at this point that that was not the case. The role of the Appointments Committee is critical to the responsible governance on the part of the RTM. The town's appointed agencies account for arguably 70 percent of the governance that occurs in town. Now, that's a figure that's been bouncing around for three years. I know the Plan on Conservation and Development says about 50 percent. The appointed agencies are responsible for a lot of the governance in town. They have vast authority, and they serve terms whose lengths are longer than any elected official in town. Those appointed to these agencies need to receive attention. The RTM is operated with the convention that virtually every item submitted to the call is reviewed by at least two standing committees, in order that the body receive a diversity of viewpoints necessary for members to make informed, responsible decisions. Even if we don't make a report at a RTM meeting, these things are being discussed at district meetings, which is a very, very important place to understand the different perspectives on an item. The congruent votes of the Appointments Committees with other standing committees are not a reflection of a committee's inability to add value, but are driven by the quality of the candidates that are coming before us. At this point in time, we are blessed with the seven selectmen and their nominating advisory committee, who have consistently and conscientiously provided us with outstanding nominees. One member of the Appointments Committee pointed out that when compared to other standing committees with closer relationships to nominees that they have due to their working relationship on budgeting and other reporting, it's easier for the Appointments Committee to ask uncomfortable questions that might be awkward but necessary when nominees come before us. Finally, perceptions of the Appointments Committee which need to be addressed. I very addressed the duplication of reporting and received values. The reports, again, at district levels are critical. When the Appointments Committee at district meetings lets other committees go first, it's an efficiency in itself. We've received criticism for giving too much information. We've received criticism for not receiving any information. The consensus at this point pretty much is if we are getting the information out at the district level, that's good. You don't need to hear it again at the RTM meeting if that's going to add to efficiencies. Our overall vote was 11-0-1 with District 11 abstaining, as it was the member's first time that she'd attended an Appointments Committee meetings, and she was respecting her district's other two regular attending members' opinions. Thank you. 11-0-1, I'm sorry, 0-11-1. It's the second time I've done this. Yeah, 0-11-1, not to recognize.
Alan Small with Transportation Committee, report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Transportation Committee took up this item and focused mostly on the transportation-related issues in our discussion, what was under our purview. So our vote was five-four, five-two against, and one abstaining. And the two against and one abstaining did specifically mention that they believe that appointments should continue to review the items as they currently do. Thank you.
Rob Perrelli Manetti with our Finance Committee, report.
Good evening. The Finance Committee took this up in September, and at that time, we made some technical corrections to the language in the Appointments Committee, and we looked only at the Appointments Committee language and the language that pertained to the Finance Committee. We felt we were not competent, really, to determine if the language for the other committees was accurate. At that time, the Finance Committee voted, it was nine, nine-three-zero, to accept the language amendment. However, we took this item up again after all of the discussion and learning about the Finance, that the Appointments Committee had been opposed to this, and so, again, viewing that we could only look at the Appointments language and the language for the Finance Committee, we voted to delete all of the language related to the Appointments Committee and to accept the language for the Finance Committee at the appropriate time. I will make a motion to delete the language in respect of the Appointments Committee.
Thank you. Andy Chapin with our Parks and Recreation, report.
Parks and Rec took this up, and we did it two different ways. One is we looked at the Parks and Rec section itself, and based upon the changes we made in September, we feel that the budgetary responsibilities for Parks and Rec should include the Harbor Management Commission, and we assumed that the Land Use Committee would like a similar change. Additionally, the last sentence of the operations paragraph should change the word "of" to "after," as when this...
Hey, question.
The expiration of the term. We'll offer an amendment at the appropriate time. The vote with four H, which was Parks and Rec, was 11-0-0, District two absent. Four is on the call. We voted 0-9-2, District two absent. The reason for that was the balance of the committee thought that locking all the committees into one item was putting too many things in one basket. The Appointments Committee is involved and useful, is useful to the process, and any current issues could be worked out in a different way. And one member felt strongly that the PMZ nominee should be interviewed by the Transportation Committee. Again, that vote was 0-9-2.
Thank you. Hattie Roberts with the Health and Human Services, report.
We took this up in September. At that time, the vote was 10-0-1. District three was absent. District seven voted no, saying they needed more information. We did not take up an additional time in October.
Thank you. Peter Burr with the Land Use, report.
Good evening again. So Land Use took this up in September. We did not take it up again. Our vote back in September was zero in favor, 12 opposed. The members felt that the Appointments Committee serves an important purpose as a gatekeeper, and its existence in the interview process prevents unworthy candidates from applying, which is why the vote is often unanimous. So how come? A little bit further a minute.
Thank you.
It was 0-12.
All right, that's the end of our committee reports. Any districts that are reporting? District 11? Susan Feige, Chair of District 11.
Good evening. So District 11 met on Wednesday night, October 23rd, in Thanh Uy Tharol at our regular district meeting. The entire call was discussed. Toward the end of our meeting, we asked each subcommittee to report if they had taken up, again, any items from the September call in relation to the Governance Items. The Appointments Committee Governance Item number four had been taken up by a few subcommittees and revoted. A lively and rich discussion ensued in District 11. We were lucky to have both Lisa Stewart and Bill Collins, who were active members of the Governance Committee. They shed some light on the very large number of people who wrote in and submitted recommendations for more efficient procedures in reporting around the appointments processes. They shared that the Appointments Committee members themselves had written in about their workload being too heavy. And many District 11 members cited about the redundancy of reporting our larger RTM meetings, with the most universal 12-0-0 votes. We talked then mostly about renominations, and we focused most of our balance of the meeting on that. Thankfully, we were also having our districts Stewart Rider and Kathy Steele, who are on the Appointments Committee as a delegate and alternate but quite active, who were able to share their disagreement with the item number four as currently written. Then we discussed their views on reappointments, which was that they have their own organized separate questionnaire that aids in the follow-up of meetings and interviews with renominations of these commissions and boards. They believe their committee does a deeper dive into the candidates, who, when they interview with them a second time, can be added to the conversation. They explained that the Appointments Committee assigns one person to oversee each subcommittee, board, or commission. John Eddie also mentioned that, in a very congenial conversation, I might add, that he firmly believes that there are all items, including appointments, that come before the RTM, should have two subcommittees. District 11, while thanking John Eddie and the Appointments Committee, who have done a Herculean job of rearranging all the expiration dates and the appointments to move around the calendar in a more evenly spread-out fashion, but they still felt in District 11 that efficiencies could be enacted about renominations in the terms of reporting and interviewing. It was brought up by another member that one of the primary roles of this Governance Committee was to create clarity and efficiencies in the RTM through feedback from its members. Many felt this number four item could be revised to be far less reaching than is currently written by the Governance Committee, but still with a better outcome for our body, especially when it came to renominations. Additional information was shared that, I believe, in the last eight to 10 years, only one, this was interesting, only one item of a re-interviewee by the Appointments Committee had a largely indifferent vote from the subcommittee of 12-0-0. Many agreed that all new candidates should stay and be interviewed by the Appointments Committee, something like an HR department, as someone previously mentioned, they do a very good job. But it seemed very redundant to have the candidates re-interview the second, third, fourth, or in some cases for these volunteers, the 10th time at the end of each of their terms, that they should just be meeting with their standing committee, who has the operational and budgetary responsibilities for that board, commission, or practice. We were also reminded that the RTM subcommittees can take up any item assigned to them with a two-thirds vote, so appointments could intervene if they felt desired in the future at any time. Additionally, another good suggestion that came up is if the Appointments Committee has a person, as John Eddie suggested, assigned to each subcommittee, board, or commission, that person could actually attend the re-interviewee process of that subcommittee and make a decision afterwards to take up that candidate further or not. That would make the candidate reviewed by their committee but not have a second report generated. So District 11, when you're ready for it, would like to make a motion to change the language that follows, to be that all new nominees must go before the interview committee. The interview, I'm sorry, must interview with the Appointments Committee, and all renominations are not required to go before the Appointments Committee to follow up for their interviews. Thank you. And our vote was 11-4, with two abstentions and seven members absent.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, do you care to inform us on what district tended?
I didn't know I was going to get this chance this early.
District 11 just reported? This is just a report on what you did. I'm not asking for any motions from you.
Okay, well, then District 10 voted unanimously to offer a motion to postpone this item indefinitely. So if that's appropriate, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. All right, so as you can see, we have many different approaches to this item. I heard one comment that there are a number of disparate items combined in this one resolution. There are parliamentary devices to take, to separate items that are like this. It's called divide, the question. There is also a device to consider by paragraph. We've never really done that, haven't done it much, so I think we're not familiar with it, but I do want people to understand there are devices in Robert's Rules to take other approaches than we have heard here tonight for an item like this that covers many different committees. So what we have before us, from what I have heard, is we have the Education Committee proposing a motion to refer this to Legislative and Rules. We have several committees moving to amend parts of this, and we have a district moving to amend, and we have one district moving to postpone indefinitely. And we've had discussion prior to the meeting on how to take these up in what order. And Robert's Rules, absent any consensus and agreement, Robert's Rules does have an order of precedence for all motions. And of those three, motion to postpone indefinitely, motion to amend, and motion to refer, the order of priority is motion to refer has the top of those three, motion to amend next, and motion to postpone indefinitely has the lowest priority. So there was no agreement on this. You know, there was discussion that if it's going to be referred to a committee, perhaps the committee would benefit from the RTM's decision tonight on some of the proposed motions to amend. But ultimately, there was no agreement on allowing that motion, all or some of the motions to amend to go first. So, motion to refer has priority. Kimberly Blank, you want to offer that?
So on behalf of the Education Committee, I'd like to offer a motion to refer this to the Legislative and Rules Committee.
All right, that being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. It is debatable. Discussion on the motion to refer? Ms. Blank? Do you want to say any further?
Not on this, but I would like to amend that motion. Is this the appropriate time?
Okay, so... Oh, hold on, hold on. So the motion to refer, made by the committee, was to refer to Legislative and Rules. That is subject to any motion to amend. Ms. Blank now individually is telling us she wants to offer a motion to amend, which would need me a second.
Yes, I will make a disclaimer, this does not necessarily reflect the views of the Education Committee. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to refer to LNR, to instead the motion to refer this item to a joint subcommittee of LNR appointments and governance, to be made up of two members of each committee, to be appointed by the committee chair.
Is there a second? All right, so what is now before us is just a motion to amend the pending motion to refer that is debatable. And the amendment is, instead of going to Legislative and Rules, to go to a special committee of six people, two from each of Legislative and Rules, Governance and Appointments.
Correct.
And those members to be selected by the chairs of those committees.
Correct.
All right, discussion...
Can I offer a few words on that?
Yes.
So it's... So, it seems clear that more work needs to be done on this item. There seems to be some support for making changes to the current appointments process, but clearly concerns about the breadth of the changes that Governance has proposed. Since there are a variety of proposals circulating, the best outcome may be to bring the relevant parties together to hash out a new proposal for the larger body to consider. Trying to amend everything tonight on the fly with the full body is difficult and doesn't lead to well-considered decision-making. Since this proposal originated with the Governance Committee, and since the Appointments Committee is the group most affected by this item, it seems to make sense that they should be involved in crafting a new solution. It would also make sense to get input from LNR, since they have expertise regarding processing drafting. Since the Education Committee only suggested referring this to LNR, I'm making the motion individually to amend this to include a broader group of stakeholders.
Further discussion on Ms. Blank's individual motion to amend the Education Committee motion to refer. Mr. Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Ms. Blank. I just have a question for clarification. The purpose of this subcommittee would be to recraft something to bring before the RTM?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Blank motion to amend. Can't see. Mr. Detschen, District ten.
I don't want to be too adamant about this, but certainly this amended motion is an improvement over the previous one. But I have my concerns nevertheless. This is, these provisions are going to govern all of the various committees, and they're interlocking. In other words, when you start moving the pieces of the jigsaw puzzle around, you're going to have various implications for various committees, starting with the Appointments Committee, of course. I am not convinced that the process that's being proposed here is adequate to deal with this issue broadly. I think there needs to be input from all the various committees. I think this idea of taking two from three different committees may not be broad enough. I think the process is going to end up, if it's going to be a well-thought-out process, is going to extend, frankly, into 2020, if it's going to be done properly. And I really wonder if it wouldn't be appropriate if we didn't simply start all over again with this various complex issue. The point I'm making is that District ten has, in fact, made a motion.
All right. Mr. Detschen, now, you're not speaking on the motion to amend.
No, I am.
No, you're speaking on the motion to refer.
I am. I am speaking on.
Only question is, should we amend the motion to refer to a group of six or leave it with the Legislative and Rules? You are now advocating postponing indefinitely. That's not addressing.
I'm advocating that if you're going to vote on this motion to refer as amended, keep in mind that you have another option, which is, in fact, subsequently to vote on a motion to postpone indefinitely, which will mean starting the process all over again, rather than trying to salvage it at the last minute with a new reduced commitment.
Further discussion on the Blank motion to amend. Betsy Fruman, District nine. Speaking on whether this should go to six or 12.
Right. And I hope what I'm going to say will pass your surveillance. I do not think this is the time to do any of this.
All right. All right. That's not, you will have the opportunity to oppose the motion to refer. All we want to do is take up this, should it go to six or 12? That's all that has been proposed.
But why isn't it also, should it go to any?
That's a different question. We're going, that would be the next discussion, once we decide whether to amend this.
I'll wait for that.
Further discussion on the Blank motion to amend the motion to refer. All right. I will, in the first instance, call for a voice vote, this being procedural. This is the question. We're not voting on referring anything yet. It's just, if we refer, we're going to take that up next, should the referral go to a group of six, as described, as suggested by Ms. Blank, or should we leave it as to the Legislative and Rules Committee? And you're not committing to referring it in this vote. Does everybody follow?
Yes.
Okay. So, if you are in favor of referring, if it gets referred, to send it to a group of six, as described, you should vote yes. If you would rather leave it for now, as referred to the entire Legislative and Rules Committee, you vote no on this motion. All right? All right. All those in favor of amending the motion to refer to substitute a group of six, as described, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, all those opposed to that amendment, please signify by saying no.
No.
All right. So, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? I tried. All right. This is the Blank motion to amend a motion to refer. If you want the motion to refer to, say, goes to six, you vote yes. If you want to leave it with Legislative and Rules, you vote no. We are, we will need to await the result of this vote before we can continue. Oh, yes, I do have, I do have some results here. And perhaps I'm wrong about that, so I will rethink that last statement. Yes, what's your point of order?
The Governance Committee is being, as you understand, without a timeframe, and several of the members are no longer going to be on the RTM. So, without a timeframe, how do we?
All right. My, the point of order, now, I'm going to have to rule that not in legal order, because you raised it too late. I've already asked for a vote on this. And I'll just tell you, I don't think it's a problem had you raised it earlier. But I'm interpreting the motion to be, the chair of the Governance Committee, it was Alexis Volgares, would be able to appoint two of the members who were on that committee. Whether it's still in existence, I don't think it matters. All right. So, you're continuing to vote on that. We need the result of that before we can, well, we want the result. I do have the result of the vote on item number three. That was the disclaimer about your, if you make statements as an RTM member. Those in favor, eighty-four opposed, ninety-seven abstaining, five. So, that item has failed. All right. Now, we are still voting on the Blank motion to amend, but one way or other, we will have to now vote on a motion to refer. If anyone wants to address whether we should refer this or not tonight, you are welcome to have the floor. Ms. Fruman, do you want to? Would you? No, I know. So, you're, you want to oppose the motion to refer. You have the floor, if you would like to make that argument.
Okay, I'm going to try again. I want to oppose the motion to refer. I believe that the John Eddy and the Appointments Committee spent a good deal of time reorganizing themselves. I think that needs time to work itself out. This is not the time to be playing with this.
Further discussion on the motion to refer, in one form or other. Nobody? All right. We will have to await. Lucy Krasner, District five.
I would share Betsy Fruman's idea, and one of the whole ideas about.
No, no, go back.
All right. Hang on, hang on, Ms. Krasner. We are in the process of voting. I ask that that be conducted quietly, and everyone else, please, give the respect that the speaker deserves.
I would just add to Betsy's wish to not refer this, and I would agree with that, because I think it does need time to work out. John Eddy put, and we all voted on those things, to make the work of the Appointments Committee smoother by not having all, if we all forget what happened there, not having all the appointments ending March 31. In our call this evening, on our consent calendar, the appointments that we have already approved end throughout the year. There was June, there was October, there was whatever. So, if the Governance Committee kept saying that they're overworked, the Appointments Committee is overworked, or it's not efficient, just not so, because it's been made efficient by these changes that were made. So, I don't think we need to refer to the Legislative and Rules Committee, which I think is just inappropriate. And that, I'll just leave it there.
Alexis Volgares.
So, I was planning to get up to speak, but I did just want to clarify one thing, because I think the Governance Committee has come under a little bit of fire. That is inaccurate. The information that we received, that they were overworked, that they wanted to split the nomination process, that, I forget what else, that it should be bifurcated, was actually provided by a current member of the Appointments Committee. This was not something that we pulled out of thin air. We had multiple pieces of feedback. I understand that they might want to walk back that information or those comments, given that they gave them earlier. But it is not our job, when we had 450 pieces of information, to go back and check everybody and say, do you still feel that way? How do you feel about this? They presented the information. It was a fairly detailed document. It was a three-page summary sent to the entire committee. We took that information, coupled with the other information, and we worked with it. So, this was not pulled out of the ether, and Governance is trying to penalize somebody. So, I think that at least we should operate on facts and not rumors and innuendo.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Mr. Eddy.
Just along the lines of facts. The Appointments Committee itself was never consulted by the Governance Committee to ask our opinion about the, the Appointments Committee itself was never, just, this is just for informational purposes, you understand, what Alexis is saying is true. Someone did come, and people did say those things to the Governance Committee, and they were listening to them. I just want to make it clear that the Appointments Committee itself was not contacted to find out what the opinion of the current members were at that point in time. I just want to make sure you understood that was the case. Thank you.
Nancy Gray, District ten.
I'm, I have the unique position in this, that I became part of the Appointments Committee in August, so I was new to the Appointments Committee, and I was able to see objectively what seemed to be going on. And there seemed to be tension between some of the people working in Town Hall and the Appointments Committee around flows of information and pressures around timing and all of the changes that the Appointments Committee had been rolling out. And in fact, in Town Hall simultaneously, there was a project underway that was creating a really elaborate and complex new way of computerizing all the flows of information and the decision processes around appointments. And the Appointments Committee had no idea that this computer program was being implemented. So, there was a tension that had been created by, you know, I think, just maybe differences of style between the leadership in appointments and the leadership of the Governance Committee. There was a tension that had kept them from effectively communicating. And so, there was a huge amount of frustration, I think, on both sides, that the Appointments Committee and the Town Hall staff, both in the First Selectment's Office and in Town Clerk's Office, were, you know, struggling to make things more efficient, and the Appointments Committee was not really helping in that process. The Appointments Committee didn't know anything about that process. Now, the Appointments Committee is involved in that process. It's a terrific efficiency tool that will be worked out over the next year, and this is not the time to rethink the appointments process. This is a time to let these efficiencies play out and let the relationships between Town Hall and the RTM Appointments Committee heal and move forward. So, please, don't refer this to Legislative and Rules right now. Let this process play out behind the scenes. Efficiencies are on the way. Thank you.
Dr. Carl Carlson, District one.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I've been associated with the Appointments Committee for nearly 24 years. When you have a proposal, like Part A of four that comes before you, you should deal with it. You should deal with something that's bad and vote it on down. So, what I'm saying to you is, don't refer this. Dispose of it entirely tonight. It's not good, vote it down.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. We're still waiting to find out what form it'll take. I think we have that result. All right. We have the result of the Kimberly Blank motion to amend the motion to refer. The suggestion was, if it gets referred, to send it to a special group of six. Those in favor, 108 opposed, 82 abstaining ones, so that motion to amend is carried. So, we are now dealing with a motion to refer to a special committee of six, two from Appointments, two from the Governance Committee, and two from Legislative and Rules. All right. Further discussion on that motion. Kathy Steele, District eleven, you want to?
May I have just a minute to compose my thoughts? It's now.
Yes. So, let me, let me just say this. There were speakers who signed up to speak on item four, and I assume it was, it had to do with the appointments issue. Please understand that if this motion to refer is adopted, we will dispose of item four tonight. We will not consider anything further on it. If we turn down the motion to refer, then we will take up the motions to amend that the various committees and districts have proposed. We will not get to the motion to postpone indefinitely absent a motion to suspend the rules, which would require a two-thirds vote to take something out of order. Kimberly Blank, you want to address the motion to refer?
I just want to make clear, the point of this motion to refer is not to push something through the body that the body doesn't want. The point of this motion to refer is to allow the relevant parties to have time to sit down and figure out a proposal that they think would work for the entire body, for these various committees and for the group as a whole, to balance the need for one group to have a good holistic view of all the appointments and to also balance our needs for streamlining. So, the point of the motion to refer is simply to craft something new for us to consider. It's not to push through what is sitting on this paper. I just want people to understand that.
Kathy Steele, District eleven.
So, full disclosure, I'm one of the newbies coming onto the RTM that actually suggested that Appointments Committee not review all nominees and that we only review new nominees, not renomies. I suggested this only a couple of months into my term, my very first term, and I, looking back on it, it certainly was made with a lot of naivete. I think it was the wrong submission, and I guess that's why the Governance Committee was formed by people that had been around much longer than I had, because they had the arc of experience to know that some of what newcomers were offering was maybe not the best choice for the body. I also, by the way, submitted about 25 other ideas, and none of those got through, so I don't know how this will make it happen. None of those were much better than this one. I want to just clarify a couple of things that were said. There was a comment about the fact that the Appointments Committee was not, was not consulted, did not speak with Governance on this. At one point, the Appointments Committee did actually speak to the Governance Committee. We asked that, we went in specifically for the point of asking the Governance Committee to put forward a SOMR that would compel the Town Clerk's Office to handle the administrative responsibility of appointees in the same way they handle the administrative responsibility of elected officials. So, there was a conversation between these, the committee, the two committees. To my mind, what's missing from this conversation is, once a decision was made by Governance to put forward a motion for change, at that point, appointments was never. to put forward a motion for change, at that point, Appointments was never, was never reached out to, to say, "What do you think? This impacts your committee directly? We would like some impact." We, you know, that's where the conversation then should have taken place. In the same way Town Services were not approached about, "Would you like to be added into the appointments process?" So I think, to me, that's where an important disconnect happened in this. I would also just add, and then lastly, and I will sit down and stop babbling. To me, what's happening with referrals, and amendments, and amendments to amend, and amendments to refer to amend? It's improvisational governance. I don't, I just don't think this is what is best for our town. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Susan Fahey, District 11.
I just wanted to say that District 11 would be in support of offering to refer. We were not trying to throw out the bathwater with the baby. We actually were having two great people on Governance, and two great people on Appointments, all who are very active on those two committees. And we really spent a lot of our time trying to find something that would be the best for the RTM, the best for Appointments, and the best for all of you in these large RTM meetings. And so if we can have...
Mr. Spiloe, for what purpose do you rise? What is your point of order? Which is a claim that there is some violation of the rules currently occurring. What is being violated right now?
District 11 did not vote on any motion to refer on this.
We didn't.
This is an individual speaker who's entitled to give her thoughts. Mr. Spiloe, I will rule your point of order not well taken.
We spent a lot of time coming up with the idea, I know you voted against it, sorry, Michael, to, not to...
All comments directed to the chair.
Thank you. To, to make sure that we found something that would work for everybody. So if this gets referred back to, I'm sorry, Doug Wells, back to L and R, along with appointments and Governance, if we can come up with something that's best for everyone, that would actually be the best thing. And then we don't have to go through the rest of the motions and the rest of the things, and come up with something that's better for everybody. Thank you.
Arlene Lamazo, District 6.
What I've heard just now are two things that concern me. It's been said that the Governance Committee, after they put their...
Ms. Lamazo, speaking on the motion to refer. Should we refer it, or should we not?
I pass.
All right. Further discussion on the motion to refer. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Education Committee motion to refer as amended to refer to six, a special committee of six people. Right? If you want to refer this item to that committee of six people, you vote yes. If you do not want to refer it, and you want to consider this, want to continue considering this item tonight, you vote no. And I'm just reminding you that absent some other order, the next, if this is turned down, the next thing we will do is take up the individual motions to amend. So if you want to refer this to the six, you vote yes. If you want to continue dealing with it tonight, you vote no. There is an order to our madness here. Ms. Truman, the order precedents of motions is the motion to refer has greater priority than a motion to amend, which has greater priority than a motion to postpone indefinitely. We are now on the motion to refer. If we adopt it, we're done with Item Four. If we do not, if we defeat it, we'll throw to the motions to amend. Mr. Detchin, for what purpose do you rise?
Mr. Moderator, if the motion to refer fails, I will make the motion to suspend the rules and consider the motion to postpone indefinitely out of order.
Okay. We are voting on the motion to refer. Everybody understands the yes and no significance. We do need to await the result of this vote before continuing. So now would be a time, after you've voted, to get up and stretch. Ms. Vulgaris. All right, we have the result of the vote on the motion to refer. Those in favor, 72. Opposed, 116. Abstaining, 2. The motion to refer has failed. Mr. Detchin, District 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move to suspend the rules in the meeting in order to consider District 10's motion to postpone this item indefinitely out of order.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules for the purpose of taking up the motion to postpone indefinitely prior to the motions to amend. Motion to suspend the rules is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. I will call for a voice vote in the first instance. If you are in favor of moving directly to the motion to postpone indefinitely to be offered by District 10, you should vote in favor. If you are opposed and want to take up the motions to amend first, you should vote no. All those in favor of suspending the rules to take up the motion to postpone indefinitely, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
The motion is carried. Jerry Anderson, Chair of District 10.
District 10 moves to suspend the rules, well, I don't know. District 10 moves to postpone indefinitely, Item Four on the call.
All right, that offered on behalf of our district does not require a second. Discussion on the motion postponed indefinitely. Mr. Anderson, do you care to address this?
Well, I think it's obvious from the vote that most people agree that we should postpone indefinitely, and it's also very clear that ad hoc changes to the rules make no sense at all. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. All right, now, the motion postponed indefinitely has the effect of switching yeses to nos and nos to yeses with respect to Item Four. So it is a motion to kill the item, and if the item were, or any part of it, to come back, it would start from the beginning and have to get on the call. So I'll ask the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. District 10, motion to postpone, Item Four, indefinitely. If you want to kill the item right now, you vote yes. If you want to continue considering it tonight, you vote no. And again, we will need to await the resolution of this vote before we can proceed. Now, while we're voting, just so we know, assuming this is going to pass, I had originally said we're going to proceed numerically through the separate items. I see no purpose in further torturing the education people here. So with your permission, I'm suggesting we take up Item, is it 15? Next. All right, hearing no objection to that, that's what we will do. Just trying to avoid having the new superintendent put her resume out tomorrow. [laughter] Is Janet McMahon here on District Eight? Could Janet McMahon come forward next? We have the result of the vote on District Ten's motion to postpone item four indefinitely. Those in favor, one-sixty-nine; opposed, seventeen; abstaining, three. That motion is carried. Item four is now disposed of. All right, item fifteen now comes before us. We welcome for the first time Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Toni Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for moving this item forward. The resolution substitution as requested from the Board of Ed, item number fifteen, resolve that the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich hereby rejects the agreement between the Board of Education and the Greenwich Education Association representing teachers for the period July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item fifteen has been moved and seconded, and just to repeat, the only change was to change the word approves to rejects. I think most of us are familiar with that. That is the only power we are given under the state statute. Josh Brown, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You took a paragraph out of my speech. Item fifteen, the Labor Contracts Committee met on this item with Jennifer Dayton, Lauren Raven, who were the Board of Ed negotiators, Peter Bernstein, the Board of Ed Chair, Tom Mooney, who's legal counsel from Shipman Goodman. Note that he does many of the town or city negotiations for the labor contracts across the state. The Labor Contracts Committee's role in this is twofold as we do it. One, we meet with the negotiators before the contract negotiation begins to talk about what their thoughts and ideas are, what they see as important in the contract upcoming cycle, and we also share our perspective on what's happening in the labor market. The town matters as it pertains to labor contracts, working conditions, including salaries and benefits. And then, the second piece is, we review the outcome of that process and say, how did that go? Did we get what we were hoping to achieve? And importantly, if we were to reject the contract, do we think we would get a more favorable outcome of that arbitration activity? We met three times, as I just described, first up front before the negotiation, and then afterwards, we met, including Tom Mooney, to go through in great detail, and then a third time to finalize the discussion and vote on the agreement. There are some key elements to the contract. The teacher's salary are made up of what things are called steps, which I'll explain, and the general wage increase. The step increases were held to the same levels as they were in the current year's contract, so there's no increase in the three years of the step schedule as part of this new agreement. When teachers are hired, they're placed into a step based on the type of degree that they have. So if they have a bachelor's degree, they go through thirteen, fourteen steps for that schedule. If you've got a master's, there are fourteen, fifteen steps, and then, you know, up to a PhD that has also fifteen steps. Each year that they're employed by the district, they move forward a step. If they get an additional degree, so if they have a bachelor's and they get a master's degree, they move over to the master's schedule of steps and proceed forward. Many of those steps, excuse me, the steps have between two and five and a half percent increases. So each year, a teacher progresses. They get somewhere between two and five and a half percent. It differs based on which type of degree the teacher has and number of years in the system that they have. So there are thirteen, fifteen steps. In addition to that, the contract also provides for general wage increases, but this contract is different in that it provides that general wage increase only to the highest step. So they don't get a step increase because they're at the highest step, they can't proceed any further. So they get a general wage increase. Note that about half of our teachers are at that highest step in any of those four degree categories, and half of them are still in the step schedule coming through. The GWI, as we call it, was 1.6%, which is well below averages that are in the 1.9% of other school districts in the state, as well as within some of the other town contracts that we recently had come through, general wage increases of 1.95%, et cetera. And so, that's a positive, that it was 1.6. Note that in prior years, all teachers, including those that were at steps, were also getting GWI, so there was kind of a compounding year over year, but not only you got the step increase, but then there was this additive GWI. So increases were ranging from three to eight percent, nine percent in some cases. That's not happening this year. We froze in, or the town has gotten, this step schedule frozen. The teachers are, Greenwich teachers are generally paid the highest in the state. The Board of Ed explains that they seek the best and the brightest and want to retain them because experience tends to have positive results, and they also need to recognize teachers, if they want to live here, need to be paid reasonably, but also if they're living elsewhere, they're going to be commuting a fair distance to get here and need to make it attractive for them to want to do that. Some in the LCC, your LCC, express concern that we do pay too much, that the combination of keeping the current step schedule for all three years with only a GWI at the highest step is now expected to slow that growth down. It's not going to stop it, but it's going to slow the growth with the idea that other towns, other communities will logically close the gap and, you know, get closer to where our teachers at the higher ranges might be. There's a small increase in addition to the salaries that deals with stipends. Those are additional monies given to teachers. About a third of them get a stipend, and they've increased about 1%, not a big deal. That's for being an advisor, being a coach, those kinds of activities. We discussed the impact of the agreement on the budget. There was some difference in that discussion. Some felt in the Labor Contracts Committee that the annual budget increase with all the things being held the same, that no one leaves, so the information that was handed in the Explanos shows that if nobody leaves, if we add all the same 933 teachers at the beginning to the end, nobody leaves, nobody gets hired, nobody changes any of the bands, they just move forward, we'd have a significant, almost 60% of our teachers would be at the highest step, but that's just not realistic because every year, we're turning over anywhere from 60 to 70 teachers. Some retire, some choose to move on, and then we replace them with what we need. Others in the group felt that the 2%, we were kind of talking about a 2% increase and what that might look like, felt that that was really pertaining only to the GWI and not the overall budget impact, and so we had quite a bit of debate on that. We clearly see that an annual budget increase of 2.9%, which is 0.9% or 1% over what the, at that time, the expected BET guidelines were going to be, would result in some change was going to have to happen to meet that 2%, and that would likely be the number of teachers we'd need to be looked at. The Board of Ed acknowledged in our discussions that they were aware of that, and they also had those discussions with GEA representatives, so they're aware that coming in with this kind of salary schedule and increases may result in, you know, some changes in the number of teachers. The agreement has a projected salary budget increase over the three years of 8.74%, which is slightly lower than the average for comparable communities of the 8.98%, and that was information provided by Shipman Goodman. Key part, another key part of this contract was increasing the teachers' contribution for the medical costs. Right now, teachers contribute 12% of their medical cost. The comparable towns, almost all of them, all of them are 20-plus percent as their teachers are contributing 20% or more. There are some towns that are up to 50%. And so, a key item in this contract is increasing that cost-sharing activity, a point and a half, a percentage and a half in each of the three years. So, at the end, it will be 16 and a half percent of the cost that the teachers will be contributing to cover their portion of the medical benefits. You should also know that the state has adopted a schedule that will shift more of the costs of the medical plan to those areas of the state that are higher cost, be it the doctor's visits are more expensive or we go to the doctors more often, and Greenwich is on the top of that list. So we're going to have an increased number or cost being allocated to the town. This provides, again, a sharing in that additional cost that members in the LCC felt was a good thing. There's some other items that were in the contract that talk about how sick days, some sick time clarification, providing hours or time to go from one location to another if your job requires you, that that is accounted for and known as to how long it should take if you're given that opportunity. Also, some additional time off for the number of parents to support, you know, new additions to their household. An area of concern was the lack of discussion on the possibility of what the state may do as it pertains to pension costs. We've seen it in a number of, the governors have talked about it, they've tried it most recently, to try to push a share of that pension cost onto the towns. We were disappointed that there wasn't a provision in this agreement that causes us to sit down together and have that conversation, should the state do that. I think we'll all be good and sit down and do that, but there's no provision to really kind of say, we have to sit down, and the teachers have to sit down to discuss, how do we absorb or what do we deal with that additional posture that we pushed upon the town. In summary, the Labor Contracts Committee found some of the provisions were pretty good, and some that we felt could have gone further could have been approved. We've already talked about the rejection versus approval. We have limited opportunity to reject the contract. If we were to reject this contract, we would have 30 days, we have 30 days to do it. This would then go to an arbitration, and so our discussion went to, what do we think the outcome of that arbitration would be? And unanimously, we felt that we would not be any better if we were to be able, if we were to push this to an arbitration, that this was a good deal for the town and a good deal for the teachers. We don't want to approve the contract, because in the past where we may have approved the contract, it was held out to us by an arbitrator as, well, you agreed to this, so this must be fine for this agreement. And so, we're very closely following what the law provides, which is to reject the contract. We don't want to approve this. Our committee doesn't feel we need to or should be approving this, and we also don't feel that we should be rejecting it. The option is to postpone indefinitely. By doing so, the contract will go into force all by itself. Our job is only to reject it. If we don't reject it, it just goes into place, and it is what it is. Our motion from the Labor Contracts Committee was to recommend postponing indefinitely. The vote was unanimous, seven-zero-zero. As a side point, note that in September, we changed the number of members of Labor Contracts to seven, and so, few often it's voted as regular numbers in that meeting, so that's why it's not the five-zero, it's the seven-zero. And then a quick shout-out by mine to Appointments Committee, who's looking, will be looking for and advertising heavily for members for the Labor Contracts Committee next term, so please keep an eye out for that, come to the meeting. So, we do look for good participation, and any interested person, step forward. I know the Appointments Committee is ready to take that up. So, at the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, I'll make that vote.
Thank you. Further reports? Kimberly Bynke, the Education Committee, report.
We met jointly with the Finance Committee to hear presentations on the GEA contract. Jennifer Dayton from the Board of Education led the presentation with help from fellow VOE members, Peter Bernstein and Lauren Raven, Josh Brown, Chair of the Labor Contracts Committee, and Lucia Jensen, Chair of the VOC, were also in attendance and reported on their committee's vote. Ms. Dayton explained that the current contract was arrived at after mediation failed. Before going to arbitration, the parties were able to come to a last-minute agreement. We spent the bulk of our time discussing the wage increase portion of the new contract. I'm going to skip describing the provisions of the contract, I think that's been well covered by Josh Brown and Lacey Sigg. During our discussion, we discussed the following concerns. Some noted that we pay our teachers the most in the state in most categories and are significantly above neighboring towns like Darrinham. As we award GWIs, this gap will continue to grow. The Board of Ed said that one benefit of having 0% GWIs for most of the steps, for all the steps below the top step, is that it should slow the growth in this gap. Others raised the concern that with a 2.9% increase in labor costs, the Board of Ed would not be able to deliver a level services budget under the BET guidelines. The Board of Ed said that they are aware of that, and that they had told the GEA that this contract could result in reduction. They recognized that they will have to make cuts in order to deliver a budget that meets the BET guidelines. We asked, what would happen if we rejected this contract and went to arbitration? Given the settlements in other parts of the state, the Board of Ed believes that we will be able to win a worse contract under arbitration. We voted on a motion to postpone this item indefinitely, and that motion carried eleven-zero-zero with District Two, absent. By postponing the item indefinitely, you do not have to vote to reject it or not reject it. If we take no action on it, the contract will go into effect, but we decline to vote on whether or not to reject this item, as we did not want to be seen as endorsing it. But we don't believe that rejection is wise, given the likely outcome of arbitration. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Correlli-Mannetti with the Finance Committee, report.
Good evening. The Finance Committee heard the presentation jointly with the Education Committee, as Kim told you. I won't repeat those items that were discussed broadly. Additional concerns that were raised in the finance discussion, both by finance people at the joint meeting, and this was the fact that this 1.6% increase at the end could have been done as a bonus, where it would not have been pensionable, rather than as an actual GWI, so it is pensionable, because remember, a huge portion of these costs is all going to go into the future into pensions. We were, there were a number of...
fine for this agreement. And so we're very closely following what the law provides, which is to reject the contract. We don't want to approve this. Our, our committee doesn't feel we need to or should be approving this, and we also don't feel that we should be rejecting it. The option is to postpone indefinitely. By doing so, the contract will go into force all by itself. Our job is only to reject it. If we don't reject it, it just goes into place, and it is what it is. Our motion from the Labor Contracts Committee was to recommend postponing indefinitely. The vote was unanimous, 7-0-0. As a side point note, that in September, we changed the number of members of Labor Contracts to seven, and so two alphabets voted as regular numbers in that meeting, so that's why it's not the 5-0, it's the 7-0. And then a quick shout-out by mine to Appointments Committee, who's looking, will be looking for and advertising heavily for members for the Labor Contracts Committee next term. So please keep an eye out for that, come to the meeting. So we do look for good participation, and any interested person, step forward. I know the Appointments Committee is ready to take that on. So at the appropriate time, Moderator, I'll make that vote.
Thank you. Further reports, Kimberly Blight, the Education Committee report.
We met jointly with the Finance Committee to hear presentations on the GEA contract. Jennifer Dayton from the Board of Education led the presentation with help from fellow BOE members Peter Bernstein and Lauren Raven, Josh Brown, Chair of the Labor Contracts Committee, and Lucia Jansen, Chair of the VOC, were also in attendance and reported on their committee's vote. Ms. Dayton explained that the current contract was arrived at after mediation failed. Before going to arbitration, the parties were able to come to a last-minute agreement. We spent the bulk of our time discussing the wage increase portion of the new contract. I'm going to skip describing the provisions of the contract, slightly that's been well covered by Josh Brown and Lucia Jansen. During our discussion, we discussed the following concerns. Some noted that we pay our teachers the most in the state in most categories and are significantly above neighboring towns like Darrin. As we award GWIs, this gap will continue to grow. The Board of Ed said that one benefit of having 0% GWIs for most of the steps, for all the steps below the top step, is that it should slow the growth in this gap. Others raised the concern that with a 2.9% increase in labor costs, the Board of Ed would not be able to deliver a level services budget under the BET guidelines. The Board of Ed said that they are aware of that, and that they had told the GEA that this contract could result in reduction. They recognize that they will have to make cuts in order to deliver a budget that meets the BET guidelines. We asked, what would happen if we rejected this contract and went to arbitration? Given the settlements in other parts of the state, the Board of Ed believes that we will be looking at worse contracts under arbitration. We voted on a motion to postpone this item indefinitely, and that motion carried 11-0-0 with District 2 absent. By postponing the item indefinitely, you do not have to vote to reject it or not reject it. If we take no action on it, the contract will go into effect. But we declined to vote on whether or not to reject this item, as we did not want to be seen as endorsing it. But we don't believe that rejection is wise, given the likely outcome of arbitration. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Correlli Minetti with the Finance Committee report.
Good evening. The Finance Committee heard the presentation jointly with the Education Committee, as Kim told you. I won't repeat those items that were discussed broadly. Additional concerns that were raised in the Finance discussion, both by Finance people at the joint meeting, and this was the fact that the, this 1.6% increase at the end could have been done as a bonus, where it would not have been pensionable, rather than as an actual GWI, so it is pensionable. Because remember, a huge portion of these costs is all going to go into the future into pensions. We were, there were a number of concerns also raised about the fact that Tom Mooney, who's counsel for the probably two-thirds of the school districts in the state, has a broad interest in doing this for many, many places, and may not be giving the most, you know, specific and effective counsel to each individual separate district. We, the Finance Committee has been a pioneer in recommending indefinite postponement for these contracts. We voted 11-1-0 to postpone indefinitely. The District 7 voted against the motion to postpone indefinitely because that member wanted to reject the contract for arbitration.
Lucia Jansen with the Budget Overview Committee report.
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee took up the teachers' contract, as we traditionally do with all new labor agreements. As now known, teacher salaries are comprised in various forms, including wages, steps, stipends, longevity pay, and make up 70 to 80% of the Board of Ed's budget. It was said in RTM committee meetings, and you've heard through the committee reports tonight, that the union representatives understood very well during the negotiations that the upcoming BET fiscal year 2021 BET guidelines will once again limit school spending to a 2% or less increase, given flat economic growth at both the state and local levels. Thus, the VOC was quite surprised with the new proposed contract showing a 2.9% fully pensionable yearly salary increases totaling 8.6 million in new costs over the three-year contract. VOC members noted that the 2019-20 teacher salary increases of 3.6% required the superintendent to cut $2 million out of the Board of Ed budget, including six full-time equivalent teachers and over $900,000 in professional learning and curriculum development to meet the 2% limit in the BET guidelines. The VOC discussion also centered around why this contract was not in the same pattern as the other labor union contracts and employee groups, starting with the 2020-2021 period. Our dedicated police on the town side, and hard-working principals, and headmaster leaders on the Board of Ed respectively signed contracts at 2.05% salary increase. And the VOC recalled, police made the momentous move from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. The VOC fully supported those contracts with a full yes approval. There were also elected officials who agreed to a 1.5% salary increase for 2021. And finally, were 55 management confidential employees that the May RTM budget meeting, with a solid RTM majority, vote of 128 to 62 to 1. The RTM reduced salaries from the proposed 2.5% increase to 2.0 in order to send a message of a similar goal for the upcoming 11 open labor contracts. Apart from the patterning salaries of 1.5 to 2.05 within the town and Board of Ed, the VOC also noted that the Greenwich teachers are currently the highest paid among their Fairfield County peers, in whatever education lane or step level is selected, and that the structure of the salary increase will not only impact the three-year contract, but also the lifetime pension payout. Further, the tens of millions in healthcare savings for the past four to five years, and low premium increases of 5% are over. It ceased, and costs are now increasing to 10%, with Hartford's implementation of a new Fairfield County location-based pricing. We were disappointed negotiations from Shippman and Moody did not increase the employee premium co-share to incorporate the higher costs, and the cost increase was fully absorbed by the town. In sum, the new teachers' contract covering more than 933 teachers increases 11.61%, or 13 million, for a total cost of contract of 360 million over the three-year term. The VOC discussed the LCC's vote of 7-0-0 to postpone indefinitely. The VOC felt that if the LCC's motion does not pass, then the RTM will be taking a yes-no, yes-no vote on the contract as presented. The VOC discussed the pros and cons, the potential risks in voting against the contract. The VOC felt that the above facts support voting against the contract. The VOC voted 8-2-0 to vote yes on the merits, which is voting against the contract, to reject the contract. District 8 and 10 voted no, because they felt the Board of Ed could possibly lose in arbitration and not worth the risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Mr. Moderator, Labor Contracts Committee makes a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on the motion to postpone, item 15 indefinitely. All right. Once again, please understand the effect of a motion to postpone indefinitely is to switch yeses to nos and nos to yeses. If you want, and it is a motion to kill the item, so if you want to kill item 15 and allow the contract to take effect by operation of law, you should vote yes to postpone indefinitely. If you want to vote on the merits of the item, you should vote no. As the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. Labor Contracts Committee motion to postpone item 15 indefinitely. Proceed with your deliberation. Once again, we need to await the result of this, so I ask that you expedite the vote so that we can continue with our next call.
This is, this is a way of saying.
Anybody longing for the day to talk with thumbs down?
No, we can reject, but what is yes? They didn't want to approve this. That's what I wanted to know.
Technically, no was not to reject. If, if the, 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 the,
The BOC had taken this up in September. We took it up again in October. And there's a lot missing in this budget process. We did not have involvement in this version that came to you from the governance committee. There are many modifications we'd like to make. And so we are going to later provide a motion to postpone to December so that we can jointly work with the Finance Committee to improve the budget process.
Thank you. Andy Chapin, Parks and Row.
We took this up in September and then again in October. The vote was the same vote times. The committee did not like this. It felt it was different committees worked in different manners and it was too restrictive. We voted zero eleven zero.
Thank you. Doug Wells, legislative and rules.
Our committee looked historically at this, just in terms of this being proposed to be a rule change. Originally, the budget process was in the appendix when the BOC made the changes that it did three or four years ago. Apparently, we've learned, nobody followed. It became a rule. If you look at the new language that's here, it's all should and may. It's advisory and our committee believes that it should be back in the appendix as an advisory, as a best practice, as so esteemed. So our only action on this, the only vote we took on this was to delete it from the rules and that the following be inserted in Section Eight of the appendix where it started.
Thank you. All right, any other committee reports? All right, so if I have this correct, we have a motion to postpone from two of our committees, a motion to refer, and a motion to amend by putting it in the appendix. Now, surprisingly, a motion postponed to a certain time has a higher priority than any of those other two. You know, motion postponed indefinitely, which kills it, it has lowest priority. So we'll take the motion postponed first. That's from Finance and BOC, so someone went off of that?
Okay, the BOC has a motion to postpone to the December RTM meeting. However, we are flexible. I'll speak on behalf of myself in terms of the date. And maybe it makes more sense to have it just to be a motion to refer with an open ended date. But we do have a committee vote to, motion to postpone to December.
All right, so are you making that or would you use yours?
I do have, it's a unanimous vote to.
No, I know, but.
I'm sorry.
But, but just as before, those with motions can agree among themselves what order they want to offer them. If they can't agree, we'll go by the list of priority. So if you're, if you're saying that you would use your discretion to allow the motion to refer to go first, you may do that. That's, that's not going against your committee vote. You're exercising your discretion to.
Okay, I will exercise my discretion and defer to my colleague from Town Services. I cede the floor to Town Service.
All right, Mr. Newman, with the, with motion on behalf of Town Services.
Town Services has a motion to refer the item to the BOC and Finance Committees for further review with no time limit.
To both committees with no time limit for reporting back? All right.
That's not to make it open ended.
I understand. Now, you don't have.
I'm not restricting them to December.
But, but it would then be up to them as to when they bring it back.
Exactly.
All right, that motion is opened on behalf of one of our committees and does not require a second. Discussion on the motion to refer item five to Finance and BOC. All right, this being procedural, I'll call for a voice vote in the first instance. If you are in favor of referring item five to Finance and BOC, you should vote in favor. If you are opposed and want to continue dealing with this tonight, you should vote no on this motion to refer. All those in favor of the motion to refer item five to Finance and BOC, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion is carried. Item five has been disposed. Item six now comes before us.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Brown, all right, yes, on behalf of the special committee.
On behalf of the governance committee, item six is resolved that the rules of the representative town meeting be amended to create a new special committee and greater focus on the long term capital project planning, reviewing current proposed capital project appropriations, and review and monitoring of existing capital projects that have been appropriated and not done. It is as appeared on the call.
All right, reports on item six. Ms. Brown.
Okay, from the governance committee, we have, again, a large number of suggestions and concerns regarding all of the long term capital projects that are coming our way. We've all heard about the Board of Ed's seven hundred and fifty million plus capital projects master plan that's coming forward. Also recall that we had special meetings during the summer to deal with some current appropriations that needed emergency funding in order to finish roofs at Julian's first school. There are other matters and issues that occurred, including some of the issues that were raised by Bloom Shapiro, a consultant that looked at the process around capital projects within the Board of Ed, and also made inferences that there's some challenges, concerns on the town side of their ability to manage capital projects. Understanding that the Finance Committee under our current rules has oversight over the capital appropriations and we're not proposing that change necessarily. But certainly with this tsunami of capital projects that are building, we need a better job, the governance can be felt, and we need a better group focused on capital and not distracted by other things to shepherd us through this process as best we can. And that's to do those three things that I talked about. One, better long term planning, get the ten fifteen year capital plan better, more robust and accurate in its timing and detail. Also looking at existing appropriations that we have coming through in our current budget and having input on that process. And most importantly, once we appropriate the monies for these capital projects, the RTM has little to no activity in monitoring what's gotten done. And we know there's hundreds of millions of dollars of capital projects that are still, that have been appropriated that aren't done yet. And so one of the questions is, well, why are they staying? Why aren't they moving? What he does faster was a priority breaker, if you get it done right away. But they tend, they may not be moving at the pace we all would think. So this new committee is expected to bring expertise around capital planning and project management. To look at, we did look at the idea of a standing committee, twelve districts with delegates and alunants. I felt a special committee that would be made up of representatives of each of the standing committees that have capital oversight or capital projects in their domain and their purview, plus some members identified by the moderator, again, to focus on this. And they would be providing input and the results of their activities would go back to their standing committees and also to the RTM. So the communication pathway was going to be that way. But the real focus was on looking for specialized skills in the capital planning and capital monitoring, project management areas, not kind of a general, general person to serve. And so that is, that's the makeup and why the rationale for a special committee. The key focus is coming up with, having this expertise. We can look at contributing to the process of town that we're, that they'll need to have and Board of Ed to have to monitor the long term projects to make sure they're getting identified detailed recently. And then put through a process that we can evaluate and understand what needs to be done when. And then, very importantly, what are we doing, what's the Board of Estimate Taxation? What's the town administration doing to monitor those projects to make sure that once we've appropriated it, they should be moving? And then what do we do to get any red lights or yellow lights flashing should something become questionable or we're not able to meet the objective? So that's the background as to this item, the creation of a new committee.
Thank you. Mr. Perelli, Manetti, the Finance Committee report.
This item came before the Finance Committee both in September and was again discussed at length at our October meeting. There is no question that the capital process in town is substantially broken. I think that that, there's very little question about that. There are many aspects of it and there are really three critical parts of this sort of whole capital process issue. The first part is that the old CIP process, that was the Capital Improvement Plan that was put together by the town, the selectmen. But there was RTM input and that was, and that process was, it worked moderately well as it was being implemented eight or nine years ago. Herb Porter and Josh Brown, I think this various other times, were liaisons to that CIP committee and were involved with two projects that were completely outside the CIP process. And that's the MISA project and then again, the New Lebanon School project. The capital improvement process totally broke down. And in the past couple of years, there hasn't even been a CIP committee or CIP process. So that's the first problem. When you look at, why is the capital, why is the RTM's overview of these things broken? In part, it's because we're not getting the information to begin with that we used to. The second part is actually considering the funds and the proposed projects in the budget process. And that's something that the, that the Finance Committee is responsible for and does and has done. And then the third part of it is, and this is the thing that I think brought this issue most clearly to the attention of the RTM and the governance committee, was the problem in monitoring projects once they're done, to make sure we don't get surprises like we've had before. So there's no question that there's a problem. The question is, what is the solution? Do we have a solution before us that we can be comfortable with really will solve the problem? And I think the answer is we don't. Number one, the Finance Committee had absolutely no input into the design of this new committee. We were not consulted about it. The first thing we saw about it was when we saw it home for September. So, you know, this is again, the governance committee took it upon itself to do this. My understanding is that the meaning at which it was voted on didn't actually have a majority of the total governance committee vote in favor of it just because of the number of people who were absent. It was a majority of people at the meeting. So this is not a proposal that has been, you know, fully approved and, and fully vetted in the first instance. In the second instance, and this is something we discussed in September rather than more recently, in these private, the people who they want to make this up as a special committee are all already members of substantive committees and they have a substantial workload. The workload that's being proposed for this new special committee is tremendous because it's basically asking people to take on the entire CIP process, the entire capital project, project approval process, and the monitoring of projects. I'm not sure that that's effective. The result of this of all is to shorten it. We had voted eight four zero to postpone to December back in September. Nothing's been done on it since then, although in the interim between the September meeting and now, I had, have had conversations and email with both candidates, Jill Oberlander and Fred Camillo for first election. And they're both committed to meeting and to working to revitalize the CIP process and get more RTM input. I don't have specific commitments of what they're going to do, but the point is they're engaged, they understand there's a problem. We're reaching out to it. We intend to be working on it through the next months. Our committee vote in October was to postpone the item to January because we really just think it's too much work to get it done before a December meeting. And we're also, it's going to be a lame duck RTM and a lame duck Finance Committee that would be considering it. So we want to be working on it and, and have the item come back to the committee in January. Although I think, I understand there may be a motion to refer this to the Finance Committee. And I think that we would probably defer in timing if that, if the body wanted to consider that first. Because, but we've also committed to work with, with Budget Over Committee in looking at the design of this committee. We think that's important. You can't minimize the importance of making sure that we do this process right. Again, we're looking at billion dollar plus plans for education. There's also rumors about that we're getting close to another billion dollars worth of capital plans from the town side. So we're going to be spending a lot of money on capital over the next few, next decade. It's very important for the process that we have to really look at it carefully. So that's why we don't think that the item's right and needs further, further work. Thank you.
Lucia Jansen, BOC.
The BOC took up this item as well. And there were two main areas that were problematic. The BOC had recommended to governments that this be a standing committee, not a special committee. As you know, a special committee meets less frequently. There's usually a reactive reason for them to convene versus proactive. Presumably, the goal of this committee is to be proactive on capital projects. I'd like to emphasize that the BOC was very supportive of the idea of a capital committee. In the past, the BOC was not supportive, previous RTM members. But we do believe that a capital committee, particularly as the Finance Chair just mentioned, the scope and size of these capital projects in the next decade are large. And we do believe more eyes are necessary. So the fact that it's a special committee format, structure versus a standing committee is the first area of concern. The second is the scope, which is looking at both new capital projects and existing capital projects. There's currently about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of existing open capital projects. The Board of Ed has a hundred and forty-two open capital projects. In and of itself, it requires a tremendous amount of cooperation with the Board of Ed, the BET and the first election. If you read the BET guidelines, there's already very good ideas being suggested, such as the town and the Board of Ed working together, more on a capital structure, reinstituting the CIP and implementing the Bloom Shapiro Report. There's a lot of dynamic movement here with a lot of good ideas from all areas and deserves more time and more attention. The BOC, when it took it up in September, the vote was, excuse me, eleven zero zero, and that was to take it up later. That motion was an amended motion for it to be taken up in December. But now that we missed that, since it didn't come up, we voted again for it to be taken up in December. And that vote was ten zero zero. However, I think I will defer to, again, my colleague on Town Services, who perhaps has a motion to refer the item with no specific date. So, thank you.
Next. Mr. Newman, Town Services.
So Town Services met and discussed this back in September and again this month. In September, we did vote to defer this or push this out to December. We also have a problem with this being a special committee. We think Finance in the past has looked at this and took up capital improvements. So we think they should look at it. That is going to be our motion is to refer it back to Finance to let them look at it. Obviously, other people are, will be involved in that process. Other committees will be involved in that process. That's our motion, it was nine zero zero, refer back to Finance.
Thank you. Kimberly Blake, Education.
We did not take this up again at our October meeting. At our September meeting, we voted in favor with a vote of 11-0-0 of District 2 absent. Discussion centered around how this committee might be different than the Finance and the Budget Overview Committees. We discussed how we hoped that this committee might bring together people with some expertise in construction and project management, would oversee projects from approval to completion, and would have an overall view of the capital spending and management of capital assets in the town.
Thank you. Why don't all the district chairs just move closer to the mic so we don't have to wait for the walk? Hattie Roberts with Health and Human Services.
Health and Human Services took this up in September. Our vote was 10-1-0 with District 3 absent. District 7 voted no, did not feel it solved the problem, and thought if we were going to have a committee, it should have all districts absent.
Thank you. Arlene Lamaza, Public Works.
I don't usually read the proposal or even try to paraphrase, but I'm going to do it this time. This proposal is to compose a committee of nine members and nine alternates taken from existing standing committees, with two at-large members appointed by the moderator. Last September, we voted 10 in favor, 1 opposed. This time, we discussed it in much greater depth. Our vote now is four in favor, but six opposed. Districts 1, 3, 5, 8, 10, 11 voted no, and I have a whole series of comments as to why they voted no. CIP projects do need continued oversight in such a committee, but such a committee is not the best way to accomplish this. Rather, a professional project manager should be hired to perform this important function because he does not have the professional expertise to do this. The description seems to be beyond the scope of the RTM, which would make it seem as if the RTM would try to micromanage the town CIP projects. Another comment, could be very burdensome based on the long list of expectations and the fact that the members must be drawn from their standing committees. Relative expertise is still an important criteria. However, the scope of this reaches into what should be town responsibilities, or at least professionally higher responsibility. But RTM needs someone such as a professional project manager to provide us with updates as the year progresses. This way, there would be accountability, and the RTM would be informed on an ongoing basis. There's a lack of fulfillment on project follow-up. Both BET and RTM do respect the group jobs of budget appropriation and approvals, but the process does end there. After that, the process, the process stalls. There's no accountability as to where the projects are completed, within budget, on time, et cetera. So as I say, our committee was very strongly opposed to this. Thank you.
Andy Chapin, Parks and Rec.
Our committee took this up. Our vote was seven in favor, three against, and one abstention. Those in favor felt that the town's capital needs going forward are getting larger and larger, and the RTM would benefit from paying more attention to the capital budget. Those against felt the new committee might be redundant and may actually add to the process, add burdens to the process.
Thank you. Alan Small, Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Transportation Committee took this up and voted 5-0-3 on the item. The five voted for it. Transportation typically in the budget cycle works with our departments, and we specifically review ongoing capital items, how much is outstanding, and get a status on them. The three that abstained felt that it may be duplicative of BOC and Finance reviews of capital currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further committee reports? All right, so once again, we have postponed and refer. So the postponed to December and January would take precedence, but do I understand that you're yielding? All right, so Mr. Newman, would you like to present your committee motion?
Town Services, motion to refer the item to the Finance Committee.
All right, that is currently before us, does not require a second discussion on Town Services' motion to refer Item 6 to the Finance Committee. I will call. Is there a discussion on this?
Just, as just mentioned, we referred it back to Finance, knowing that they would ask the other RTM committees who are involved with Finance, including BOC, and even get feedback from governments, have a full discussion. We're not sure they want all this work, but we're pretty sure they will come back to us with a good working item for us to then vote on in the future.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to refer. All right, I will call for a voice vote. If you are in favor of referring to Finance, you vote yes. If you want to continue dealing with this tonight, you vote no. Let me guess. All those in favor of referring Item 6 to the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, that motion is carried. Item 7 now comes before us. Postponed. Oh, so this is a sense of the meeting resolution to change the charter so that the RTM would not see any appropriations under $25,000. May we have the committee reports on this? Kimberly Blank.
So I was actually for the Governance Committee to...
On behalf of the Governance Committee, thank you.
Okay. So resolved, it is the sense of the representative town meeting, that the Board of Investment and Taxation amend the Town Charter, Section 30, to increase the appropriation amount requiring RTM review be raised from $5,000 to $25,000, and the rest as appears in the column, Section 30.
All right, so that is currently before us.
So the Town Charter requires the RTM to review and approve all appropriations over $5,000. This number appears to have been set over 50 years ago. As a matter of good housekeeping, the Governance Committee believes that it is time to raise that amount to reflect the increasing costs and services during that period. This would require a charter change, which the RTM cannot do on its own. So this is a sense of the meeting resolution, which could lead to the beginning of the charter change process.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules report.
We addressed this issue with the town attorney and with our committee members, many of whom are on the Claims Committee, and the concern of the town attorney as well as the LNR members who are on the Claims Committee was that this would take away the responsibility and the ability of the Claims Committee to address those settlements that are between $5,000 and $25,000. You could have a case in litigation where a claim may be several times that, but the town attorney would like to have the Claims Committee consider settlements even as low as $5,000, $10,000, certainly below $25,000 to get the input of the Claims Committee. So we had that one concern. The other concern that we had is that apparently the Governance Committee did some research and that there weren't really that many items that had come to us that are between this $5,000 and $25,000 number. So I'm not sure that this is a solution for a problem that exists. So our vote on this, to approve this on the merits, was one in favor, 11 opposed, with 10 in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley Manetti, Finance.
The Finance Committee primarily considered this in September. We had the same concerns about the frequency of items of this size. About the only ones that ever come to us that are between $5,000 and $25,000 are gifts, except that's usually not an issue. We felt, as a committee in September unanimously, that by a vote of 0, 12, 0, that this was, that this item should be rejected, primarily because why go to the trouble of charter change for something that really doesn't happen very often and isn't significant? So our committee voted against it. We think it's a kill.
Well, just so everybody is aware, the frequency of it coming before us refers to the full RTM, but it comes, the Claims Committee deals with quite a few of these matters.
But we don't have a problem with that.
No, I understand that, and the town attorney and members of the Claims Committee don't want to change that. So, all right. Lucia Jansen, BOC.
BOC took up this item with fresh eyes since the previous vote's taken with misinformation. The proposed Governance Committee change is to allow departments seeking an interim appropriation to have a higher threshold. Josh Brown came to us from Governance, that he examined the RTM's historical records, and except for the Claims Committee, there really aren't interim appropriations of this size to the RTM. The BOC agreed to increase the threshold amount to account for inflation, but felt $25,000 was excessive. We made a motion that will be presented later on the item. The BOC vote on that motion was 9-1-0, to increase the threshold from 5 to 10K.
All right, so I guess that's the time now.
The BOC makes a motion to increase the threshold from 5 to 10K to account for
All right, there's a motion to amend offered on behalf of one of our committees. It is currently before us to increase. Now, this is a sense of the meeting resolution. We cannot change the charter ourselves, must be initiated elsewhere. But it is a sense of meeting resolution asking whether it's the Board of Selectmen or the BET to initiate that, and then we, it would come to us for final approval. All right, so the proposal is to change Item 7 from, to reduce the $25,000 down to $10,000. Is that correct? All right, that's a motion to amend. Discussion on that motion to amend. Dr. Carl Carlson. Be followed by Glenn Kaner.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, on inspection of Item Number 7, I was not friendly to the proposal originally put, because I thought the RTM was giving away some of its power. The power we have is to supervise the financial activities of the BET. If we give a, increase the amount that requires our examination, then we lose that power. However, it is reasonable to increase it a little bit, and that's why I think a nice compromise can be had by accepting the Budget Overview Committee's recommendation. It takes care of my concerns that only really low amounts are not brought before the RTM, and we don't go quite as high as this proposal had. So I say, what we should do is we should go along with the Budget Overview Committee on this amendment.
Glenn Kaner, member of the Claims Committee and District 12.
Good evening. I had signed up to speak because at Legislative and Rules and the various members of the Claims Committee, we felt that $25,000 was a bit high to allow our excellent town attorneys' discretion to settle cases. We thought that was high, and so I was going to propose that this resolution be turned down. However, I did want to share with you that in Connecticut and in many states, claims by minors for injury or whatever generally can be settled up to $10,000, and at $10,000, you do have to get the input from the probate court. So I do think that that is an apt analogy, and so I'm speaking just for myself, not necessarily on behalf of Claims, but I would concur that I could see if the town wanted to go with the procedure of changing the charter from 5 to 10, that there would be a basis for that, that is provided in other areas of law. So I would, I would also go along with the proposed amendment.
Further discussion on the motion to amend the number from 25 to 10.
Can we hear from the town attorney?
Well, Mr. Fox, do you care to speak? We do want it. Thank you.
Two quick points. Number one, I'm a great believer that if the system works, there's no need to change it. The system that exists with the Claims Committee works very well, reviews cases that are brought before, and the $5,000 figure is one that we have dealt with for many years. I don't see need to change it. Secondly, if you do decide to change it to $10,000, I believe that would come under Section 66 of our charter, and that there would be a change in the power of the RTM, and it would be a referendum. For those reasons, I would oppose, it's case if you not change what we have now.
Well, that puts another spin on it. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Further discussion on the pending motion. All right, we're going to have to take a record vote. I'm sorry. Lucia Jansen.
Lucia Jansen, speaking as an individual on the BOC to the motion that is on the floor. After hearing our town attorney's wisdom, I think I would be supportive of his point of view and to vote against the BOC motion. Thank you. Okay. But I'm speaking as an individual, not the committee.
So, once, once a motion has been accepted and is before the body, it's the body only that can withdraw it. However, if there's an indication that the moving party would like to withdraw it, if there's no objection, then we could, upon unanimous consent, allow that withdrawal. Is there any objection to this motion being withdrawn?
No.
No? All right. So that motion to amend is withdrawn. Thank you. That leaves the motion, I'm sorry, that leaves the item as presented on the call. Any further discussion on that? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item Number 7. If you are in favor of increasing the level of review from 5 to 25, you vote yes. If you want to leave it as is, and understand what Mr. Fox explained to us, ultimately, if this were to be made as a charter amendment, it would require a referendum of all voters intent. So if you want to leave it as is, you vote no. While we are voting, we will continue. Item 8 now comes before us. This was postponed from September, and this changes, again, this is a charter change. This changes the number of petition signatures. There are three ways items get put on our call formally, and that's through action of the moderator, the First Selectmen, or the chair of the BET. The fourth way is by any citizen petition, and this changes the number required from signatures from 20 to 350. All right, Mr. Rothhurst, on behalf of this special committee.
Resolved, it is the sense of the representative town meeting that the Board of Selectmen amend the Town Charter, Section 173, to increase the number of registered voters to cause the RTM to act be raised from 20 to 350.
All right, thank you. That is now currently before us, and any report? Arlene Lamaza, Public Works.
In September, Public Works voted 11-0-0 in favor of this item. However, we took it up again for the October meeting. Our vote was eight in favor of two of Public's districts. Eight and 10 voted no because they thought it was too high.
Kim Blank with the Education report.
Education did not take this up again at our October meeting. In September, we voted in favor of this sumer with a vote of 9-2-0 with District 2 absent. Districts 9 and 12 voted against the motion because they felt that 350 was too high a number. They believed the number should be higher than 20 but lower than 350, and suggested they'd be more comfortable around 100. The rest of the committee felt that 350 was a reasonable number, noted the ability of groups to go to their districts to try to get items on the call if they didn't feel of groups to go to their districts to try to get items on the call if they didn't feel they could get the number of signatures required.
Thank you. Mr. Brody Minetti, Finance, report.
The Finance Committee put this in detail in September. The discussion was broad. We voted in favor of the motion, seven, five, zero. Districts One, Six, Seven, Eight, and Twelve voted no. Opponents of the item said that this is inconsistent with the traditional Midland Town Meeting, where voters, you know, can all propose an item. Consideration, other people were concerned that this did not happen sufficiently often to justify the cost and time of the charter change, and again, a referendum.
Thank you. Alan Small, Transportation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. The Transportation Committee took this item up and discussed that three fifty seemed like a lot of signatures to get, and we talked about different amounts that may be appropriate. There was a motion made to change the number of three fifty to one hundred, and that passed our committee seven, one, zero, with no vote feeling that twenty was okay and that we shouldn't put a further barrier. The constituents are getting an item in front of the RTM.
Mr. Small, do you have a motion, your committee?
Yes, a motion to amend to one hundred signatures.
Next, Patty Roberts with Health and Human Services.
We took this item up in September. Our vote was ten, one, zero. District Three was absent. District Ten voted no, because they thought it was too high.
Andy Chapin, Parks and Rec.
We took this issue up. Generally, the committee favored increasing the number of signatures needed. The vote was eight, three, zero. Those who were against us thought three hundred and fifty was too high a number.
Mr. Newman, Town Services.
Town Services took this up in September and voted to leave it as it was with no change and in a, to show how elections do matter. We had a different committee with some alternates and some no-shows. So this month, we voted seven, two, zero, to approve as is with three hundred and fifty. District Nine does not, doesn't think this needs to be fixed. They were a no vote, and District Twelve thinks the lower number gives you more access to the RTM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burr, Land News.
Land News took this up in September. Our vote was five in favor, seven opposed. Objections included the fact that the number's too high and therefore too exclusive, and the RTM should be more open to public participation. The no votes for Districts One, Three, Four, Six, Seven, Eight, and Ten.
Lucia Jansen, Legislature Overview.
The BOC retook this vote from previous month's vote. There was considerable dialogue on the appropriate number of signatures. The BOC conceptually liked the idea of increasing from twenty to three hundred and fifty with the logic of one percent of registered voters is the reason for the three fifty. However, there was an opposing view, and a motion was made by District Two to lower the threshold to one hundred and seventy-five, required signatures, but that failed by a vote of four, six, zero. So a new motion was made to accept the item as presented. The BOC voted nine, one, zero. District One and Ten absent. District Six voted no, felt the threshold should be lower. Thank you.
Doug Welsh, Legislative and Rules.
We took up the item. We took a couple of motions to see if we could arrive with a number that seemed to make sense. Most everybody felt that three fifty was too high. We first voted on fifty being the number. That failed five to seven. We then went to a hundred. That failed six, six. So rather than bidding up the number, we just decided, knowing full well that somebody would come forward with a number other than the one we picked, and I gratify them, there's only one number out there currently rather than several. We just voted on the item as presented for three fifty, and that failed. Vote of four to eight, with District Two, Four, Eleven, and Twelve voting yes.
Thank you. Mr. Broderick, Governance Committee.
So the conversation seems to be about what's the right number. Twenty seems to be too low. We wrestled back and forth, you know, started off at a thousand, then it was twenty-one, then how about nine, ninety-nine. We went back and we're five hundred. No, it's too, somebody too low. So whatever the number is, it's kind of arbitrary. It just, by, based on the information that we received on the Governance Committee, it was felt that, from the number of suggestions, it should be higher than twenty. So, I mean, we can roll dice or pick numbers, but the number we finally came up with was three hundred and fifty, which is one percent of the voters, registered voters in town. This does not prevent people from coming to a district and asking a district to propose something which districts have the power to do. So if somebody was really motivated, they could do it with just one person if the district thought there was value to their proposals. Other than that, three hundred and fifty indicated a broad support across town, so that seemed like it was gonna be worth the effort to bring it to the RTM.
All right. Mr. Small with the Transportation motion.
The Transportation Committee makes a motion to amend item eight from three hundred and fifty signatures to one hundred signatures.
All right. Now, discussion on that motion to amend. All right. We could adopt by unanimous consent. That only would change the number, and then we would vote on it. Is there any objection to reducing that number from three fifty to one fifty? Okay. Will the district chairs please mark your vote? We're going to vote on the Transportation Committee motion to amend item eight by reducing the suggested number of signatures from three fifty to one fifty. I'm sorry. Well, oh, one hundred. One hundred, okay. From three fifty to one hundred. That is what we are voting on, just a motion to amend. We will then, regardless of what happens on this vote, we still have another vote, whether to adopt any change. So, right now, should that number, item eight, go from three fifty to one hundred signatures? You want to change to three fifty or one hundred, you vote yes. You want to leave it at three fifty, for our later vote on the merits, you vote no. So will the district chairs please conduct the vote on the motion to amend? We will need to await the resolution of this vote before we can proceed to take a final vote on item eight. I do have the result of the vote on item seven. This was the proposed change of RTM jurisdiction through sense of meeting resolution from five thousand to twenty-five thousand. Those in favor, fourteen, opposed one forty-seven, abstaining one, that item has failed. All right, we're getting close. Want to leave it at twenty, you should vote no. Now, remember, this, of course, is a sense of meeting resolution, and nothing we do tonight could change it. But we are, if we adopt this, we are asking the Board of Selectmen to initiate this change and bring it back to us so it can be finalized. All right. Item nine now comes before us. This was postponed again, and this is a housekeeping thing about how we fill vacancies during the term. Is there someone from the committee, Ms. Frumant, on behalf of the Governance Committee?
Yes, on behalf of the Governance Committee, resolved, it is the sense of the representative town meeting, that the Board of Selectmen amend the Town Charter, section one seventy-one, to remove the requirement for the remaining district members to notice the town clerk when a vacancy exists. The rest is as it appears in the call.
All right. Do we have any committee reports on this?
I'd like to talk to it for a second. This is really only housekeeping. The charter requires that the district petition the town clerk to call a special meeting so that you can elect a new member. The town clerk has taken it upon herself over the past two years, I think, to, since she is the first to know that there's a vacancy on the district, she immediately calls the meeting to elect. It's a much more efficient method of doing it, and it works beautifully, so this is just housekeeping.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh, the Legislative and Rules report.
Yes, as mentioned, this just conforms the rules of what is actually happening. Our vote on this was twelve, zero, zero. We did note some minor language changes that were necessary in the paragraph C. It should be districts with a apostrophe between the T and the S rather than after the S, and in the next line, our delegate for District Six wanted to make sure that this was gender neutral, and so he took out the word E and replaced it with the word and, so that reads for the purpose of filling any vacancy and shall cause female to touch the board.
All right. So those are motion, that's a motion to amend?
Yes.
All right. Did everyone hear the proposed amendment? Could you give us that one more time, Mr. Welsh?
Sure. In paragraph C of the call, in the line that begins the town clerk, it says a special meeting of such districts, and the apostrophe between the T and the S rather than after the S. And in the second line, where it says vacancy, period, delete the period, put in a comma, and insert the word and, take out E, so that reads for the purpose of filling any vacancy and shall cause female to...
All right. So everyone now aware of the proposed changes? Is there any objection to that motion to amend? All right. Those changes may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. Any further committee reports on this item? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item nine is amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. That brings us to our final item tonight, item fourteen. Now, that, now listen. This is the final meeting of our selectman, John Tonner, as a selectman. So...
Is the final meeting of Peter Jackson?
It is. It is. And I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, because Peter was here earlier. But John Tonner has, this is the conclusion of his fifth year, two and a half terms, as selectman. And John, I want to thank you for your diligence in coming before us and presenting motions on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and for your service, of course, on this body as well. So, John Tonner, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you all very much. This is item fourteen on the call, and I have a substitute resolution.
Okay.
Resolved, the following man, first nominated by the Board of Selectmen, appointed a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherall Board, for a term beginning upon appointment and expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Will members please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Alexis Valguero, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Good evening. Mr. Carter met with the Health and Human Services Committee in September to discuss his nomination to the Board. He's a new appointee. Currently, the Board has two vacancies, and he will be filling one of those vacancies. Every board member on Witherall has a unique role, and Mr. Carter is being asked to step into the digital marketing role and assist another board member, Suzanne Hogan, who is a public relations expert on the Board. Professionally, he's had a very long career in advertising and marketing. He's worked for Beyond the Rubicon, Time, First Media, and he's also founded two startup companies. His role is to really work on the website, news releases. He wants to look at the Facebook page, which hasn't been updated in a while, and he also hopes to help Witherall rebrand itself, because as you know, they lost their five-star rating, and they've been trying to get that back. Our vote was eleven, zero, zero, and District Three absent. Thank you.
Thank you. John Eddy with the Appointments Committee, report.
Mr. Moderator, I'll just bear with me a second while I get my report here.
This is mine. This is the petitioning, the sort of housekeeping.
Mr. Carter was nominated to succeed Dr. Elizabeth Sidoridis, who has served since April twenty sixteen. Most of the information that we have from us are very similar to what Alexis and Esteban provided to us. The vote on this by the Appointments Committee was eleven, zero, zero, District Ten absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item fourteen. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item fourteen, proceed to poll your delegation. We will need to await the resolution of that vote as there are no further items just done before. We have the result of the vote on item eight, as amended. This was to increase the number of signatures from twenty to one hundred. Those in favor, seventy-one, opposed seventy-five, abstaining zero. That item has failed. All right, we have the vote on item nine, which is the housekeeping change on vacancies. Those in favor, one thirty-one, opposed four, abstaining zero. That item has carried.
Thank you for doing...
We have the result of the vote on item fourteen, the appointment of Mr. Carter. Those in favor, one twenty-four, opposed zero, abstaining zero. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home. Happy Halloween.